Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the workshop for the Greenville City Council on June 10th, 2024 order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I refer nodding over tonight's or today's workshop. First, I'd like to call Honor City Clerk for the road call.
Sure thing. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor for Tim Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Present.
Councilmember Blackman.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson. He should be joining us soon. Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right, Mayor Connolly, of course.
Thank you very much. I guess we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
No change, Mayor.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion to may by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. It feels like forever since we had a meeting. I'm like mental lapse.
Thank you, Mayor. First item in our new business is update on the Unified Development Ordinance Project. I will now call forward our Director of Plan Development, Ms. Everett, for the introductions.
Good afternoon. Wonderful world of UDO, Unified Development Ordinance. In front of you should be a brief little packet there. Starts off with a little brochure or flyer that has a QR code on it. We are going to be, there's a survey that's attached to your packet that'll lead you to that through the website, and we're encouraging you to pass this along and try to get all the public you can involved. We'd like to hear from them on this UDO. And you have a list of those members on what we call our stakeholders group for the UDO as we begin. If you have any questions on that, I'll be glad to answer at the end. But again, we're here to talk about the comprehensive review and rewrite of our zoning and subdivision ordinance. And we're eager to go through this process and compile and process and add to, take away from, but to make a product at the end that's user-friendly, easy to understand, and makes Greenville better. We have hired a consultant. It's Inspire Place Making Collective, and typically we deal with Ms. Sarah Sinatra. She was unable to make it tonight, so in her stead, we have Mr. David Henning. He's a senior planner of the group, and we're going to turn it over to him and let you, let him tell you about their involvement in our UDO process.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you all for inviting us in. We're excited to be working on this project for the city of Greenville and for you. Now, what you see here, the branding on your screen carries through to some of the other materials, including the website, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. But the agenda for today is to introduce the overall team and the project that you'll be seeing here over the coming months. An overview of just what a Unified Development Ordinance is and can do, as well as important dates and events, and then wrapping up with answering your questions that you may have for us. So this is the project team. As I mentioned, most of the time you'll be dealing with Sarah Sinatra, Sarah and Robbie Addington there. We're both here at the end of May at the first stakeholders meeting. But everyone kind of on this screen, as well as the back of house, is working hard to make this the best project that we can. The project itself is to update and modernize your various ordinances and to combine them into a Unified Development Ordinance. And that can mean a lot of different things for a lot of different communities. In this particular project, there is six ordinances or types of categories that are being combined into one easy-to-access place. One is your subdivision ordinance, another is your zoning ordinance, and as a part of that, we'll look at the potential for adopting some conditional zoning as well to give you all an additional tool. Your lighting ordinance, your signs, your development review procedures, and the vegetation and buffer yard standards. And that's kind of the universe of what we're pulling together for you all to become a part of the UDO. It's the job of this project to work with Greenville's community and residents and the task force that you've assembled and with the staff to develop this first Unified Development Ordinance for you all. There's going to be, we'll be hosting a series of public events along with your staff and an online engagement platform that we'll talk about a little bit more later in the presentation. And we'll help you implement the final code through workshops and training with city staff so that you hit the ground running with the new document, with the new regulations, and the new format for the regulations. The overall project goals are ensuring that there's authentic public involvement, transparency, and predictability. Authentic public involvement, that means multiple accessible means of engagement. And right now, at this part of the process, that's one of the most important ways that you can help this be a success, to have get word out to your constituents and to the people who you know also spread the word that there are these opportunities to participate already available online. As transparency, it's important that we keep the website and updates current and often update where things are so that everyone knows exactly where the project stands. And predictability in particular comes into effect with the end result, with the actual UDO itself. We want that to be a document, and I promise that that will be a document that's both user-friendly and consistent so that you don't have to be an academic to understand just what's going on in the community and how development works. So what is this Unified Development Ordinance? As I mentioned, it combines several codified ordinances into a single comprehensive document. It helps bring those ordinances into alignment with the comprehensive plan, in your case, the Horizons Plan, where needed. And just to give you an example of the kind of analysis that we do, this is from the College Dale Land Use Matrix, but we actually are comparing the policies and the actions in the Horizons Plan to see where we can bring some of that guidance into the UDO. And the UDO will be more intuitive for the reader and for staff, more predictable in creating opportunities for cleanup and reorganization. There's a number of community engagement initiatives. One of those is the task force itself. There are community members and representatives on the task force, and we'll see them in a moment. There are open houses that are an opportunity for people to drop in with the time that they have and to ask questions and provide feedback. All of that material will also be available on the website, and again, we'll see that later in the presentation. And there are additional staff-attended events to really make the most of this round of public engagement. So the task force itself is a group of professionals, stakeholders, and staff working with the knowledge of the development ordinance, working with the knowledge of how development works in the community, its processes, its shortcomings. And it assembles diverse perspectives on development, community, and Greenville's future. It's not all people who are developers by any means, and it's neighborhood members as well and neighborhood representatives. It's people who have a stake in how Greenville will develop in the future. And they also serve as our ambassadors for the project and interactions with the public. The task force members themselves are, should be on a sheet in front of you as well, but are on the screen too, and it's a combination of local stakeholders and community members, also representatives of the council and advisory board representatives. So thank you for serving as representative from the council, as well as city staff. And the city staff is, there's a lot of the staff from the Planning Development Services Department, but also representatives of engineering, neighborhood and business services, and public works, all providing their say and their input into this process. The first task force meeting, that one that was led by Sarah Sinatra, was on Wednesday, May 29th, in which she discussed public engagement strategies with the task force and requested inputs on the survey and the website that are now live. And so that means that what we are asking the public has already had Greenville residents' eyes on it to make sure that we're asking the right questions and asking things that'll be useful as they continue their role in helping to guide this process. The next UDO task force meetings occur over the next few months, July 15th, August 28th, and then another one later in the year with the exact date to be determined, but we have some options already cleared. The online engagement, which is available at the QR code on that flyer that you all have, includes the branding for the Greenville Unified Development Ordinance Project, as well as the survey questions, and all activities that occur at the open houses will also be available online for people who can't make it. It's another way to make sure we're reaching out to as many people as we can. And this is not the statistics for your community. This is another website that's been up a little bit longer, but it shows how with the website, we can see when the interaction is coming. We can see whether, what kinds of different pushes from the community, pushes to the media or to social media, result in receiving some action from the community, and we can use that going forward later in the process to make sure we're doing the most effective things we can. The open houses themselves will emphasize interactive activities. We don't just want people sitting and reading, reading boards and staring at maps. We want them to be able to communicate with us and communicate what their concerns are, what their ideas are. As I mentioned, all the other materials will be available online, but they'll also be available in print there. There's always the possibility that someone either doesn't have strong access to strong internet or doesn't feel as comfortable working with technologies they do with the printed work. There'll be three locations in Greenville to maximize participation, and that again helps us spread the word further, all with the same, all with the same actual activities that we can combine and feed back together. In addition to those three large open houses, there are a number of events that city staff is planning on attending with the QR code kind of prominently displayed so that you can direct people online and also available to answer questions and to kind of broaden the overall understanding and recognition that the project is ongoing. First of those is at the Juneteenth Celebration, but you can see there are six other events kind of throughout, you know, running into November at places scattered around the community at different parks, as well as kind of close to downtown at the Town Common. As far as important of dates and events on the project and our next steps, the project website, as I mentioned, is live and accessible. The easiest way, if you don't feel like writing out the entirety of that URL, is there is a link on Greenville's official website, kind of front and center on the webpage, at least on the desktop version of the webpage, that you can use to link to that online engagement. Also, if someone can type in this address. The open house events are scheduled for August 7th, 13th, and the 15th at City Hall, River Park North and Boyd Lee Park. And with that, really, we welcome your comments and your feedback and are prepared to turn the rest of this meeting over to you to see what I can answer or what staff can answer, ask any of your questions. Thank you so much.
All right. Any questions, comments? No way.
I just have a quick question.
You know what I do.
Can I ask Donna a quick question?
Go ahead.
So the Aquarium Fitness Center, is that going to be because BET is going to be under construction?
During this time, yes.
Okay, okay, okay. That's my only question. Thank you. Sorry.
No, mine, I just was going to say, thank you for a really good presentation.
Great presentation.
It sounds like there's a lot of community involvement, a lot of opportunities for the community to be involved. Really, just looks good so far.
And I can't stress enough that this is a, this is really a first opportunity for us to rethink how we try to communicate with the community and to try to look at the individuals on our task force to be the conduit to be able to help us to push information out, as well as the council themselves. So the more that we can engage our stakeholders and the council to be able to connect us and individuals, the more input we're going to need.
All right.
Where's the link for the questionnaire? So the link is, it's either at inspired-uego.com or it's available as a QR code on the flyer, which I think there's a digital version of as well for you on a charity or institutions. And it's on the homepage of the website right now, so.
It's like if you're trying to take a picture. Did you miss? There's two of them. Okay. That's enough. That's enough. It's two, I'm there.
Everybody uses those QR codes.
We have one of the open houses at South Greenville or S.
I'm sorry.
Then we have one of the open houses at South Greenville or S.
So I'm going to pass that to staff, sort of the actual location, whether it's used to go out to check availability and blinding a date and so forth. Be glad to.
I was going to say, yeah, okay. Thank you.
And I want to offer for a suggestion, having paper copies at the open house events. I feel like QR codes are the best way to go, but there are still individuals who this is going to be the best way for them to be able to communicate their thoughts.
All right. Move on to the next one.
All right. Item number two is the Pitt County Arts Council and Emerge Review of Their Deliverables for the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Based Off of Their Contract for Service. I will now ask Executive Director of Emerge Gallery Holly Garrett to come forward for the presentation.
Okay. Well, I'm really excited to be here today. I know I've presented in front of councils several times about public art projects, and this is my favorite day because I get to tell you everything my staff and board has done this last year and everything we're already planning for next year. But a little background, because I know a couple of you, a few of you are new to the council since I last presented our annual report. We are, you'll hear us, our organization name is Emerge Gallery, but also the Pitt County Arts Council. We are two arms under the same entity, doing things inside our facility and out through the entire county. Today, I'm going to concentrate on what work we do in the city of Greenville. But our mission has stayed the same our entire, almost 24 years now, and that is to enhance the quality of life in Greenville and Pitt County by promoting artists and arts organizations, educating through the arts, and I think the most important, making the arts accessible to our entire community. We do that because we have the most incredible board of directors. We have a lot of fun in our board meetings because they are active, they are planning, and you will see a lot of ties to Greenville here. Devinder Culver is our, will be coming on as a second term as president. Maria Satira is our president-elect. Amanda Wall, who is the controller for GUC, so she is keeping our finances in check, is our treasurer. And then Sierra Jones is our secretary. And a note, Sierra, who works for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, is also the incoming president to the Greenville Museum of Art this next year, so she's a busy lady. We could not do the work we do without our staff. I have the best staff, and even though I get to stand up here in front of you, my staff are the doers. They get things done, they enjoy doing it, at least that's what they tell me, and they are just the most accountable, amazing people that I could ever hope for. So some of the programs we do inside Emerge, we, as you saw on the other screen, we have around 100 ECU students coming in to Emerge each, that should be year, not semester. It used to be semester, but now it's year. I'm also a full-time faculty in the School of Art and Design and oversee the community arts management programs and the internship programs for the School of Art and Design. We try to get these students out off of campus into the community and see how the real world works. And it's amazing how many ECU students have never even been on Town Common, and they're seniors. So that's the first thing I do, is take them to Town Common and around our downtown area. So it's truly a learning lab for their students. This summer, we will have over 500 kids come to Emerge for our summer camps. We're in week two of our summer camps, and I was telling Lisa this morning, I got to teach them how to do the Potter's Wheel because that's my background, and so I love, I love working because I'm on the Potter's Wheel in the morning and here presenting to you in the evening. We also do adult classes, and then the second Friday of each month throughout the year, the summer we don't do this, we take a break, we do our African-American music series, and this has just been an incredible program. The last two years, we've also tried to take it out of Emerge. We've outgrown the space, so we've taken it throughout the county. But we were also, we're really trying to help our arts organizations, especially downtown, and we took Christie DeShiel to the State Theater in April, had an amazing performance. And in November, we'll be bringing Shawna Tucker to the State Theater. So trying to get people into these businesses downtown through arts programming. Our Youth Public Arts Project is our longing-running outreach program, and I just want to highlight some of the projects we have done and later on will be doing. Back, gosh, when I think Gary was still here, we did the mural at the Drew Steele Center. And so we try to collaborate a lot with recreation and parks. And last year, worked with the recreation and park staff to do the murals on the back of Magnolia Arts Center that faced the Perkins Ball Field. And it is much nicer to see this when leaving a baseball game, the broken windows are plywood. This last year, this is outside of city limits, but we did work with, we love working with partners. Whatever we can do to bring in as many organizations and partners as possible, we worked with the Time for Science, and actually, the kids went on a field trip to their griftin wing to paint planters and learn about native plants from North Carolina. And we hired Rukaya Jackson, a local artist, to help teach the kids and the painting process. They also learn about music half the day, so they come every other Saturday to Emerge and half the day work on public art and half the day learn keyboards and meet with a guest artist from the African-American music series that stay overnight. Our second outreach program is Artist's Good Medicine, and this has been expanded this last year. A lot of the things you're going to see, we get private funding to make these things happen. And so this program has been running since 2007. We send artists into the chemo bay twice a week to work with patients who are getting chemotherapy because it's a long process, so they do art activities once a week to the Children's Hospital and once a week to the Hope Lodge. And next year, we're going to be expanding this to the maternity wing for mothers on bedrest or who've had to stay after delivery. And so it's just such an incredible program. And then we also tried, I think I showed this last year, this was actually last fiscal year, but we've continued this program, Food from the Heart at South Greenville Elementary School. And we worked with Def Shepherd with Hardoscope to do this, and Brandon Qualls, owner of Ford and Chip, he restocks the refrigerator with perishable foods when they call us and say they need more food. Other things we do as the arts administrator for the city and county is we work with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We share this calendar, so if you want to know what's going on, you can go to the calendar. Ours filters just for arts and cultural events. And we also maintain an artist database, so if any of you are creative, singers, musicians, get you on there, Matt, you can add your profile for free, and we really want to show that so many of our community members are very talented and creative. I'm going to just click on through. So tonight, this afternoon, I'm going to talk about the deliverables that we had this last year. I sort of talked about a few of them, but I'm going to get right to the actual deliverables that we said we were going to do and that we did. One was planning for the Multicultural Arts Festival. We put together a steering committee of over 20 individuals from ECU, ECU Health, City of Greenville, Pitt County, PCC, Pitt County Schools, and different multicultural organizations throughout the city and county. What an amazing team. This was actually brought to me before the pandemic by the former city manager about bringing back the International Festival. If you remember the Greenville International Festival, it, I think, hasn't occurred since 2006, maybe? And so we knew that 2006 was one time, this is 2024, and so we have named this the Mosaic Multicultural Arts Festival, which I'll talk about in a little bit, but we've spent this last year planning with our stakeholders what this will look like. We also implemented the 19th Annual Youth Arts Festival, I think it was the 19th Annual, and it was our best one yet, even though it was a rainout. We moved it to South Central High School and our partners with the city, Pitt County Schools and ECU College of Fine Arts and Communication. It was amazing because we had a record number of people attend an inside location, over 5,000 people. So we are expecting close to 10,000 this year on Town Common because it's going to be beautiful weather. The great thing about this festival is not just what happens with the free art demos and activities and performances, but we raise money. We get sponsorships, and the sponsorships go to the Pitt County Schools Arts Educators Fund for arts and music and dance and theater teachers to purchase materials and supplies. So it is a really wonderful product of it. We also, in the past, we have not coordinated the art walk. We have been a stop along the art walk, but this last year, we jumped in full force to help coordinate the art walks and as part of our Emerald Loop Program, which I'll talk about in a little bit, we rented the Emerald Express Trolley from the city with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and wow, what an impact it has had. On Friday, this shows you what the arts do. This past Friday, we had the Pitt County Schools K-12 art exhibition. We had over 600 people come to Emerge. I think the museum had close to 300 people come through. The science museum was packed, and we had 173 people run, ride the Emerald Express Trolley. So every month, it has gotten more and more, and it's just so exciting to see people going to other businesses, all different parts of downtown. And I'll talk in a little bit about economic development, and that is true economic development right there. We also supervise the Black Creatives, or I shouldn't say supervise, because we are just the fiscal agent for them and giving them space and resources to meet and come up with projects, and they are just doing amazing things with socials, networking events. Next year, we'll be working on a public art, another public art project, and their president of their committee is actually one of our employees, PJ, Paula Jordan Mayo, who is doing a great job leading the group. We also oversee all the arts organizations in Pitt County, but I just want to bring a couple things to the forefront. One thing we offer is free strategic planning for any of our nonprofit arts organizations, and we worked with Magnolia Arts Center this last year to do planning, sort of serve as a liaison with our city staff and help them continue to grow. We're very excited because they will be doing their summer performance of Jesus Christ Superstar actually at the State Theater, which we're helping them fund to be able to do that. And so there'll be five nights at the State Theater, so get your tickets as soon as they're ready. We also conducted a strategic planning process, really extensive. I mean, the stakeholders, the stakeholder meeting surveys, everything we did. We tried to reach as many people in the community as possible, and the board actually dedicated four meetings to the planning, and then after, and this was their idea, we went through task by task every single board meeting to see whether we were doing it, whether we needing it, whether we needed to adjust it, and it is just, the investment is just incredible. I want to point out two things we're really, just to point out to you, emphasize diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. That is part of our core. board meeting, to see whether we were doing it, whether we needing it, whether we needed to adjust it. And it is just, the investment is just incredible. I want to point out two things, we're really, just to point out to you, emphasize diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. That is part of our core values. And also establish the county as a regional arts and cultural hub. I think we can all agree, we've got to elevate Greenville and Pitt County as a cool place to live, lots of things to do, and the arts have to be at the table when we come and talk about that. We also conducted the sixth survey of the Arts and Prosperity Study. This is a nationwide economic impact of the arts study, and the Greenville ENC Alliance and the Pitt County Economic Development Department helped fund us to be able to just spotlight Pitt County. And what this showed, and I think this is just really important, just what I was talking about, the art walk. When you think about, I said 600 people came to Emerge. The average person spent over $30, $33 other places for dinner, for drinks, for, not parking anymore right now, for childcare, all different things. And so, what's that, $180,000 that that generated in the downtown in a three-hour period of time? So that shows, this actually puts a number to just that great feeling of how we feel when we go to an arts event. But many of you know, when you go to a concert or an event, you're spending a lot of money outside of that event. And then we do things that aren't on our contract for services. So when the idea came up of a 250th anniversary art competition, and I said, yeah, we'll help you out. So this was a really fun event, that we got wonderful submissions and, but again, it's us working together and reaching out to the school system as well. So that was our administration, our public art program. You all remember these five sculptures as part of Down East. I'll be coming back to you in late November or December with our next five or maybe six So June, wow, June is a really busy month for us, because the culmination of these projects that have been going on for three years are finally happening. So we have finally installed the paddock sculpture down off of Dickinson. This is just truly a labor of love, and I want to invite everybody on Saturday, June 29th, at 4 o'clock, we'll be doing a special dedication, very short, because it's going to be hot out there. And then, starting at 7, at the State Theater, we'll be having a pop-up paddock club night. And this is a really exciting night to bring back a history, a part of history of Greenville, but also to serve as safe space for our LGBTQ community. Again, not, oh, this was actually on our contract for services, but something where there's a need, Wildwood Park, wonderful, the design, there was a sculpture pad, but no sculpture. We worked with Recreation and Parks staff to install this beautiful piece of art by Holly Felisa Chapel Hill artist. And I just, I just really want to thank Don, your staff, Recreation and Parks, just amazing, helped with the installation, the planning, and it was just really team, team effort. And if you haven't seen this in person, please go see it, it just sparkles.
Yeah, that picture is another beautiful justice.
It's beautiful, and it's big. Something else, again, not in our contract for services, but something that we continue to maintain, it's important to us, if we, if we work on a piece of public art and there's an issue, we are there to fix it. So this, it was good, I couldn't find a more recent picture, because you can see this light went out, and then two of the lights went out. So we installed a brand-new $18,000 lighting system last year on the fly. We gotta keep it, keep it well-lighted, and so this will be rotating next year. All private funds go to make this happen.
Is it true that next year, you guys are going to switch it out, and you're going to do council members' pictures up there? And they're going to do five minutes of their scene?
Yeah, we gotta see who it's going to be, you know?
Yeah, somebody's going to lose out.
Maybe Andy Warhol, Andy Warhol style. I can see it now, PJ. Maybe we'll just put you up there.
We want people to go downtown. That's their way.
Hey, you can apply. Start working on it, let me know.
Sure, I'm a communist, love.
Okay, and then the last portion of our contract for services is the Emerald Loop. This is our largest project we have ever embarked on, and the money that we have raised from different stakeholders, the partners we have brought in, everybody has the same vision. And this started back in 2017, and we are still going. And we're getting a little closer each year, working with a lot of logistics. So two years ago, we've installed the first two intersections. We were the only North Carolina creative communities partner who got anything done during the pandemic. And because of that, the North Carolina Arts Council has continued to fund this project. We're waiting for street skates to be done, and then we'll roll in right after to keep going on this. Another part of the Emerald Loop is the Emerald Express. We are so thrilled that the city has allowed us to partner and be able to rent the trolley for the art walks. And like I said, it is just, it shows the success and the potential of how this trolley can grow and connect our businesses. Please hold the date for Juneteenth at 10:00 a.m. for the dedication of our Town Common Art Shelter. This, you know, all of these projects went three times over budget, and we were still able to find the funding and a lot of private funding to still make this happen. If you have not been out here, go check it out, sit on the porch swing, it's reminiscent of the houses that were on First Street. And we should have all the bells and whistles ready to go by Juneteenth. There'll be sound, there'll be lighting, we're getting there. But the impact of these projects with Emerald Loop, it's not just art projects. These are, the interweaving of different things is pretty amazing. So this was installed, and I think we said two weeks later, I want you to look at this bus stop here. Transit put a bus stop. I fought for that in the beginning, but then it appeared. There was no bus stop to go to our city park, and now there is because of the shelter. And that's what it's about, that is what it's about. So you'll hear in a little more, in a little bit, how this is going to continue. So looking at next year, what are we going to do next year? We're going to continue with the Youth Arts Festival, save the date for October 19th. The Mosaic Multicultural Arts Festival, get ready to eat some amazing international food. Here's some amazing performances. That will be on September 21st. We are going full force into the art walk, working with the Convention and Visitors Bureau to just bring this up another notch. So First Fridays of the month, 5 to 8, plan to be downtown, ride the trolley, see some great art, go to the scullery, right, Matt? Have some specials, and we're just really thrilled to keep this, keep this going. We'll continue with the Down East Sculpture Exhibition. We are finally installing the Dave Mira sculpture at J.C. Park, and I think that dedication, we're going to install it this summer, and the dedication is going to be August 25th on a Sunday. We also, our Youth Public Arts Project is going to be working on installing a mural on the substation in West Greenville, and so I'll be coming to you to present about that once we get a little closer, this will be in the fall. We are continuing planning on the next four intersection murals here, and just have to coordinate the street skate, the paving, and then we'll come in and, come in and get out as fast as we can, and leave something beautiful. We're also going to be planning for this mural on the retaining wall of Elizabeth Street Roundabout. And a very extensive project, working with public and private entities. And in between is our district-wide lighting program. And so City Hall, it's going to happen, Courthouse is going to happen, our private entities takes a lot of...
The scullery is going to happen.
There we go. I got you, Matt, we got it. Okay, there we go. We'll work on it, we'll work on the budget. That's more my style. But I do want to say, this morning, I got an email from Bright Speed, and we have the agreement to be able to finally put the green light on the tower. So this is a three-year process, I wouldn't let this go. So it's, it's almost here. And then I would love, don't you think the Emerald Express actually needs to look like this?
Yes.
Okay, that, we'll see, next year. I just want to give you a little picture of what it could be.
Michael could drive it.
I'm glad you said that, PJ, not about Michael driving it, but Mark, our city employee, who has been driving the trolley, has been incredible, incredible, loves every First Friday, it's a great time, so. And then lastly, I want to make a point, that when I showed you the economic impact of the arts, we, you know, when, and I've probably said this to you before, when, when we receive funding, whether it's contract for services or grant, we do not see it as a handout. We don't take it and then just sit on it. We leverage it with other money, generate more money. And so, you know, our budget this last year is going to end up being about a million-dollar budget. Our first year of existence was 20,000. So we, we work actively to bring in funding, but expend that funding and make sure things happen. So the Emerald Loop started because of North Carolina Arts Council funding city, city contract for services, and also a national endowment for the Arts Hour Town Grant. We were one of only 60 cities in the country to get it that year. We will be applying for another Hour Town Grant of $100,000 to bring two more shelters to Greenville, one proposed on the Eighth Street side of the Greenville Museum of Art, and the other proposed somewhere on Albemarle Avenue to talk about the block, the Roxy Entertainment. And so keep your fingers crossed, that'll be going in in August. And there you go. So we like what we do, we have fun doing it, and we just really want to thank you for all your partnerships. You know, a lot of the committees, I want to say thank you to Valerie, and also Dennis, part of Don's staff, serving on our Civic Arts Committee. But we, again, if we all have the same vision and figure out how do we get there, it's going to make it a lot easier. So thank you for having a similar vision. Okay, any questions at all?
I got one question. The murals, or like, yeah, I think they're murals that you put into the, the intersections of Evans Street and Reed and Cote Tanchon Reed?
Yeah.
I noticed when I was driving through there the other day, is there anything that we can do to like clean those? I know there's a lot of tire tracks.
The tire tracks come and go. We can, I know with the maintenance, after they were installed, there is a maintenance protocol that maybe we can talk with engineering about. I know, I've noticed that there's just like a lot of gravel in the middle, you know, you would never notice it without it.
Yeah.
But that's something that we can discuss.
Okay, I mean, they look really nice, I mean, I just wanted to drive through there a few days ago, I noticed that it was, there were a bunch of tire tracks.
Any like tar, like asphalt? I guess, and it's from the, I'm sure it's from the Fifth Street.
Sure.
Area. But we will definitely, thank you for the encouragement.
Sure.
How about it?
Holly just is always an amazing presentation, amazing work, and thank you so much for all you do. And I remember the days, this was just kind of a far-fetched vision, and it's just, it's so joyful to see this happening. I had a couple of questions for you. The $18,000 for the lighting project, that's not something that you just kind of reach in and find your spare change. Was that made possible because of the funding, the grant funding you already had in place?
With specifically the Bright Speed?
Or the light, the $18,000 to replace the...
Oh, that one, that one.
Yeah.
So we, when we see a need, we reach out to local foundations, and so we were able to get a local family foundation to help us with that. We also, each year, put a little bit of money into, and you'll see this in the contract for services, that was a private project, so we did not use any of this money, but we have a public art conservation and maintenance fund that each year we populate with more funding, just in case we need to. But with that, because that was all private dollars, no taxpayer dollars or, you know, public dollars, we, we like writing lots of grant applications. So we were very thankful to be able to get the funding to be able to pay for that.
Yeah, I'm glad you could, because that's, that's so important to making our downtown so...
It is, it's our front porch, you know? I mean, we've got to make sure it's well left.
And I'll say, you will, you will not believe how expensive the lighting projects are. They are just absolutely astronomical, but we're slowly but surely chipping away at it to get some projects done.
My last question is about First Fridays. I saw a post or heard something about the last art, first of all, the Friday was amazing, the art show at the Greenville Museum of Art, just surpassed all expectations. I didn't even get to Emerge, because...
I barely, I got to the museum after it had almost closed. It's hard to get all around.
It is, it's hard to see the thing, and just what a wonderful evening it was. I saw a post, though, that said something about it was the last art walk of the season or year, are you talking about fiscal year?
Yeah, so we break for the summer, and we'll come back in September. So the summer months, specifically for our nonprofit organizations, we sort of switch gears, and a lot of us do camps and things like that during the day. So we will not be doing an art walk in July or August, we'll come back in September with a bang.
All right, I'll miss it, but I know everybody needs a break.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you so much, I want to make a statement. Everything you're talking about is really great, the economic impact you make to our city, the lifting up of our history and telling those stories. A lot of our history's been lost over time, and being able to tell the community, newcomers to our area, about our history is really important. Making the city more beautiful and enjoyable place to live in is so important to the happiness of our citizens, but also to attracting new business and new citizens to the area. Everything you're doing is just really great, and I think it's well worth the investment. So thank you so much. And also just that caring for and celebrating the diversity of our city is so important, and I just love seeing that throughout your slides, it's really, really great job, thank you.
Well, thank you for all your partnership and support.
Thanks, Oliver.
All right, Mayor, item number three, Downtown Greenville Partnership, presentation on review of deliverables for the 2023-24 Contract for Services. I'll now call for the Director of Downtown Greenville, Kyle Parker, for...
Well, good afternoon. I have been chomping a bit to be here with you all. Just introduce myself, my name is Kyle Parker, I'm the Executive Director for the Downtown Greenville Partnership. I, like I said, I've been excited, I've been wanting to sit down with you all for the better part of the year, since kind of taken over the reins. But again, there's a lot of great things going on, like Holly just mentioned, you know, and we are, we are running in the same direction, at just about the same speeds, we're catching right back up. But you know, with the rebrand and everything else, we're really, you know, looking forward to the future of jumping in and going through it. But with this time, I just wanted to jump through, talk about what we've been doing as an organization, kind of going through. Of course, you know, before we get too deep into the liberals, I do want to talk a little bit about us. As we were discussed, you know, formerly, the last time we came to use an organization and presented to council, we were Uptown Greenville. This past year, we have really focused on an organizational rebrand as well as a, you know, a district-wide rebrand as well. So going with that, but the, the common occurrence was getting back to the... So, going with that, but the common occurrence was getting back to that word downtown. You know, I, just to give a quick story, I am a transplant. I've been in Greenville about seven years. The more time I've spent in this position, talking with more people, the more I found out, the college kids called it downtown, the residents called it downtown. Everybody who really called it uptown were either merchants that were in the district, our organization, or transplants like myself that knew it no other. But again, it was, you know, a great opportunity to really come together and get back to that great feeling of what a downtown was. So, with that, of course, our organization focuses on three main priorities in this downtown district, the continued beautification efforts, hosting events in the district, and then marketing the merchants and marketing the districts itself. So, going into it here, first up will be the beautification. Of course, with our fiscal year being July to June, we're coming up, part of it, part of the rebrand, but also part of our deliverables, are maintaining the banner system in downtown. This July, we have, we have put in 86 brand-new banners throughout the whole district. That spans all the way from Town Common down to this 10th Street connector and everywhere in between, just branding our district itself and giving the, you know, kind of giving the placemaking and also talking about our website to be able to drive them to the downtowngreenville.com. We power wash the sidewalks in the district. We did that last August. Our contract sees the flower boxes that are throughout the district itself. We coordinate with the city to make sure those are maintained and rotated out, but we, you know, we do reimburse for those services. We did that in May, in October, excuse me, and May. We also worked with the remulching of flower beds. Those were done around in October and in May again this year. Another thing, a big important thing, we partnered with the city to provide brand-new Christmas decorations and more holiday decorations this year. That was a joint partnership between us and the city to just update the current holiday decorations in the district. But we went, I mean, we went big. The Christmas, the tree that sits here at Five Points is about, I would say, two and a half times bigger than the last one, and the wreaths expand a larger footprint than where they were. But the biggest one, the one we're most excited about, is this Hodges Alley. This is a project that was in the works before I even joined the organization, and that was over two years ago, which is wild to think I've been here two years. But, you know, being able to finally put this, get the completion of it in December of 2023, and really just showing, you know, just what the plans for these future of this organization and, you know, continuing beautification and providing brighter, safer alleyways in downtown for people to walk through and enjoy. We've also left, you'll see here, this little survey question as part of our Strategic Plan General Interest Survey. We just kind of asked, you know, what, break your overall feeling of how beautiful downtown is. And you'll see, almost half the respondents said about a three. So, meaning, you know, really being able to kind of work that way, that gives us a good starting point to really make sure that our enhancements and beautification efforts continue to make it better. Going on to events, which you kind of take a big part of it, throughout our calendar year, Holly did talk about it, but part of the art walk, we do partner with, with Emerge and the Pitt County Arts, as well as the CBB. But we came down, I sat down with Holly about May of 2023, and, you know, we talked about breathing life, getting some more excitement going for the, for the art walk, and we really worked there, the coordination between our three organizations to do just that. And so, we started those conversations in the May, beginning of June, really started planning there. But this year, like I said, the introduction of the Emerald Express has been a huge success. You know, the average ridership throughout the footprint was 60 riders with, up until this was created before Friday's art walks. But as you say, in May, we had 131, and hearing that we had 40 more people ride in June just tells you that the efforts that we've put in really kind of do, are making it a bigger, you know, more exciting, and we're looking to, we're excited to continue to use this partnership, to use this trolley to get people, not just through downtown, but I mean, you know, with this art walk, we do partner with ECU as well with a few of their props. So, you know, having the trolley to run you from downtown to campus and back is really huge with making it accessible for everybody to participate in the art walk as well. But we also, we talked about what constitutes art, you know, everything, anybody can decide what, well, art can be anything to anybody. So, we really want to make sure that any business, anybody that was downtown could participate in it that way. So, we kind of opened up like, you know, whether it be music, whether it be food specials, or if it was actually having arts or an installation as well, giving them the opportunity to be able to present. So, we saw we've had 19 merchants participate in this year's art walk throughout the year. But with this, you know, going into, we're loving to take this success. Yes, we're hitting that summer ball, so we can all kind of catch our breath and really kind of work and make sure how we make it better. But again, being able to, you know, use the trolley has been such a godsend and has been great. The renderings for it, I think we need to make it work, because again, I mean, it's just going to be that much more fun. Then we roll into Free Boot Friday, of course. Free Boot Friday, the official pep rally for ECU home football games. We hosted, we were supposed to host four this year. We had a rainy fall. We ended up having one canceled due to tropical storm Ophelia. But, you know, we really worked into this. As this is going into, it was its 23rd year of doing it, but just, you know, continuing to work with our partners to make it more of the place to be on Friday nights. So, we really looked into booking some bigger, regionally-known bands to kind of bring some more entertainment and excitement into the event itself. You know, talking, then ranging from all different kinds of music with, you know, the opening along with the Vega Bonds to catch more of the indie rock college crowd, it stretched to a wide group. We had Greggy and the Jets, which is an Elton John cover band scheduled to be for the one that, that unfortunately did get canceled due to the tropical storm. Homecoming, we brought in Sean Kingston, which is a huge name we had. That was our biggest one of the year. We're saying about maybe 400, 500 people participating in that one, but it's also, we were fighting the rainstorm. So, it could have been, it had the potential to be bigger if the weather would have cooperated. And of course, the last one in November, we went with a Fleetwood Mac cover band that has performed in Greenville before and has shown out and has a really good participation, and we had great participation at that one. One of the important things is we have increased the student participation at these events this past fall as opposed to other years. So, that's where, you know, as we're hosting things at ECU, trying to meld the, you know, the ECU community with the Greenville community, seeing more younger faces out there and seeing both groups really kind of participate together was really exciting to be able to kind of bridge that gap and get everybody, everybody participating. But we also partnered with Jarvis United Methodist Church to be able to move a lot of our inflatables and more of a, kind of an opportunity for families that if they didn't want to be right in the action with the music, give them the opportunity to sit down in their grass area, be able to participate, but listen to music from a safe distance. So, we're excited to be able to work with that, you know, with a downtown partner to continue to develop that, so we can, you know, make it a more all-ages-friendly experience. And then, of course, running through there, the Dickinson Avenue After Dark, our twice-a-year craft beer sampling event that we host. We hosted in two locations this year due to some of the construction projects that were going on in the district. October 6th, we had 14 participating breweries and wineries, three of those being first-time participants, and all three came to us after the event and talked about how great of an experience it was and wanting to come back and participate. We then moved that into the April 5th. It was originally scheduled for March 22nd, but due to rain, we had to move it into April. But with that, we expanded it, and with the addition of Crush Distillery, a craft spirit provider, well, a craft spirit, it's micro-distillery. We worked with them to operate as a craft, you know, a craft beverage to participate as well. So, I mean, we had 19 participating breweries, wineries, and a distillery, which is the most in event history. And, you know, it went off, everybody enjoyed it, but with the introduction of Crush, you know, being able to see that we can find other types of craft beverages, and in the future, we're wanting to look at non-alcoholic versus alcoholic, providing craft, you know, craft options for anybody possible. But these events continue to grow. Post-pandemic, Dickinson Avenue After Dark is our quickest-growing event. So, it's exciting to continue to see the growth and development of that. But we hosted it back on Eighth Street. We had to, the previous two, we had to host on the Little Dickinson Avenue itself, just because of the construction going on at the time for Science Building. So, being able to move back to the Eighth Street location where it all began was kind of great. But as we continue to grow and build, we will quickly hit capacity for what we can do in that location. My end goal is to be able to move the event itself onto Dickinson Avenue and be able to open it up and participate with merchants on the avenue itself. So, that's hopefully in the not-too-distant future, we'll be able to see that. We just got to get done with the, the construction projects. Greenville Gibbs, of course, is the kickoff to the holiday season in downtown Greenville. We partner with Recreation and Parks to make this possible. This year, we did a couple of little facelifts, but also included more people. You know, Greenville Gibbs at its base is just an opportunity to bring everybody together to get, kick off the holiday spirit, but also a way to give nonprofits in the local community the opportunity to get out and see people. Traditionally, in years past, they have ranged anywhere between eight to 10 nonprofits participate. This year, we had 13. And as well as this, we include a, kind of a holiday market as well, is that? We've increased that we had 21 vendors, and something that hadn't been done in past, these were two separate events held in the same parking lot. But we really looked to, you know, combine them into one event and have everybody kind of on the exterior to feel like you had this kind, this area just filled with people and a lot of fun activities kind of going on in the middle of it. So, being able to do that, but we also instilled, you know, thankfully, Recreation and Parks had a pre-existing partnership with Bailey's. We were able to raffle off a Bailey's gift card at the event. But we use that as an opportunity for people to get in front of the nonprofits. In order to get into, in order to be able, entered into that raffle, you had to provide proof that you had visited each nonprofit that was participating at the event that night. So, we look to continue to hopefully build that and grow the event. And of course, you always get to hear 'Till the Night Before Christmas. That's always right before the tree light, and it's everyone's favorite part, is participating with Mary Connolly and reading that story. But it's also the debut of the brand-new Christmas decorations that were going on, that we had installed earlier that year. And then, we had some huge shoes to fill. This was with Pirate Fest. This is our second year partnering with the City Manager's Office, and, you know, why we said, the hard work that we had put in in 2023, that's what I want to lead off with, is the work that we put in for the 2023 event was recognized with North Carolina Association of Festivals and Events as their 2024 Event of the Year. So, building off of the success of 2023, we're sitting there, how do we make it bigger? How do we make it better? So, we really partnered together to make, to just get an increased feel for where do we stand as a, as a festival as opposed to other groups in the area, going and seeing, we were vendor fee-wise, we were not with the average, we were below average. So, being able to jump up that, we also saw the increase. We went from having 75 total vendors at the 2023 event to having 129 at this past year's event. So, being able to talk about the increase in participation with vendors, the increased participation of people at the event itself. We invited two new pirate groups to the event. We had Captain Jim's Magic, who brought his own mobile stage, and we were able to use him to end cap the event, but he did pirate-themed magic throughout the day, and the Sword Circle, which provided another setup opportunity where they set up a small pirate encampment and, you know, helped to take over the, the Town Common. But we also, we worked with City Manager's Office. We refreshed the Pirate Fest website, as well as the social media platform, and utilized it a little bit more, and that allowed us to get a wider reach and a little bit more recognition online to get the word out about the event itself. We're slowly starting to creep our way back down Evans Street. We used first, we used the block between First and Second Street this year to accommodate the increase in vendors. But, you know, also getting back to the, you know, the days where the event was stretched all the way down Evans Street. We're wanting to make sure, you know, hearing the comments and everything in the past about good, was it good, was it bad, whatever, you know, as we're wanting to get, as we continue to grow and we need to take it over, we want to be that, so we can be a part and, you know, partner with the merchants as much as possible with that as well. We also increased our volunteer base through partnerships that we used with the university, with the College of Hospitality. We were able to get a huge influx of volunteers to help us, you know, put on this massive event. And of course, the headliner was Sister Hazel with an opening act of Taylor Holder. Again, a couple of bands that spread, you know, kind of stretch multiple genres, multiple generations to provide a full-on concert. Two other partnerships that didn't, we did not get a slide for, you know, we partnered with City Manager's Office to host the New Year's Eve event. We, we helped sell beer for the event to be able, I believe that was the first time that beer had been served at New Year's Eve post-pandemic. So, being able to work with that and providing that concession for participants as well, we look to hopefully that continues to grow as well. And then, we're also currently, we're partnering with Recreation and Parks on their Bites on the Bridge, as well as their Sunday in the Park series to provide the same concession services. And so far, it's been a really good partnership. There's been a lot of positive feedback to having the opportunity to grab a beer while at Sunday in the Park or have a beer with dinner on Bites on the Bridge. And then, our marketing, you know, as discussed, with our launch of the rebrand to the Downtown Greenville Partnership in July of 2023, came with a whole, brand-new rebrand along, went along with it. We contracted with Life Media Group out of Downtown Greenville to provide the services of not only doing the organizational rebrand, but also building a brand-new website. But of course, you know, we changed our Doing Business as name to the Downtown Greenville Partnership and had a, you know, a brand-new website at downtowngreenville.com. This is the first time, and what I can see as I'm digging through, we have provided, when I first joined the organization, the only really marketing collateral our organization had was an eight-and-a-half-by-11 flyer of "Here's Everywhere That You Can Eat in Greenville." As, you know, we're wanting to increase our marketing efforts, we need more pieces that we can hand out to people that talks about what's going on in, you know, in the district itself. So, we had created, not only have we created our own magazine that we look to update every six months, but we have created food, shopping, and nightlife brochures to be able to hand out to people at events, to be able to have at hotels, points of interest, to really be able to kind of have those, you know, those printed materials that you can pick up and look through, that really market and showcase the downtown, the downtown area. We're continuing our business spotlight campaign, of course. That is something we created last fiscal year, and we've continued it this year, where we go in and we get some high-quality photo and videos of the local businesses, and then we then put them together and then post them on social media. And then, we utilize, we utilize Facebook marketing dollars to promote these posts and push them. So, continuing that campaign, getting a lot of good feedback from the, from the merchants, and we're seeing that a lot of, a lot of our top posts on social media are these business spotlight posts. The most they're getting, most engagement, most likes, most shares, are these spotlight posts. It's a really great opportunity for us to, you know, be able to provide that to the merchants to get their name, their social medias out to the masses. And then, the last thing, you'll see this on the next slide, is we have created an interactive mural. This is a huge mural. It's about 30 feet by 18 feet. It is housed in the Student Center on the first floor, right off of the information desk. But it really, it is a street map of the downtown district and has locations for every single merchant that is down here with their location as opposed to it, with also scanned two links to either that business's website or our website that has a, that has a description for that business. And of course, these are some of the marketing efforts. As you see, this one on the far left is our business spotlight post. I mean, you can see 552 likes on that is above average for what our normal post does, but again, that's a large number of likes. We have our monthly newsletter there next to it, and then the artwork for the visitor's guide, our food guide, and this, of course, is the mural that's at ECU's campus. So, just being able to kind of get the word out, push it. And you'll see this left-hand part of the mural, we're working on here this next fiscal year. The plan is to put a TV in that left-hand side that we can then run promotions for events, for businesses that run through there. So, we'll be partnering with ECU to make sure we can get that logistically done and updated. And just some of our social media analytics, you know, as you'll see, our visits, our reach, you know, our Facebook reach, 365,000 people over the past year. The graph doesn't look very impressive, as you see with that big spike there towards the end of the year. Holly brought up parking, so I'm going to talk about it. That was a huge spike that we got from our parking suspension post. That is our highest-performing post of the year. It got just shy of 1,000 likes. But also, something that dug out is, this got such big attention, people in Greenville, South Carolina thought it referred to them. So, that's why you see our numbers jump, like, our Facebook following, you'll see those huge spikes in May. That's where we, we kind of, we got some, we got some new follows from people that are in the western Greenville down south. You know, just continuing to grow our face... Um, you know, just continuing to grow our face, you know, our Facebook, our Instagram, they continue to grow. Um, so just what we're focusing on is planning on, you know, just growing our following, promoting more stuff and getting in front of more people. And then the most important thing, so this rebrand, everything that we've done this past year really kind of came towards the end of our last strategic planning cycle. Um, so after we rebranded in July, I got right into work on putting together the next strategic plan for what this organization's going to do over the next few years. Digging in, looking at the history of what we, our organization has never really put multi-year comprehensive things together. It's only usually been a year of work. So I was really, this is something I wanted to make sure that we did, that we had that framework that we can hang on to and say, over the next five years, these are the tasks, these are the projects, these are the plans that are really going to be able to drive it to where we get to the end of it, we'll be able to sit back and say, look at how far we've come. Um, I brought copies of our executive summary. I'll leave here for y'all to take afterwards, but we'll just kind of go in, we'll hit the highlights with it. Um, so of course, you know, our strategic plan focuses on those three priority outcomes that we're focusing on, the beautification, the marketing and events. The, the way I collected data and what this plan was built around was a combination of a general, general survey that I posted, put out during the holiday season as well as one-on-one kind of interviews with business owners. So between the survey and in those conversations, we got just shy of 500 people to respond to it. So being able to use that, that information to build this plan was very crucial. Uh, beautification wise, the three main things that we continue to find, um, you'll see down here, you know, almost 74% of the people wanted to see more green space, 43% want to see more sanitation, more public art, um, and lighting projects kind of led the responses that we got in beautification. So we built three major plans off of this. Um, and you'll see here, we want to increase the number of our flower boxes and the reach that they get in the district, you know, as it's turning more concrete and we're working, we're working to kind of add more color splashes in there, but these flower boxes, I feel like is a very quick way that we're going to be able to, to jump in and add color in there. But as you'll see, year over year, expand that reach, um, throughout the district. We want to continue to do the alleyway lighting projects like you see with the Hodges Alley. Uh, we've identified four other alleyways that we're wanting to do over the next four to five years, um, to provide those. And then well, as something that I'm, I'm excited about hopefully be able to do, but we've identified a few green spaces that are currently in the district that are not much other than just mowed areas. We want to be able to potentially turn those areas into public use spaces, um, to be able to promote that as, you know, areas to be able to hang out and spend time in. So those are things that we're going to be working on beautification wise. Events, uh, the feedback we got, you know, continue to grow our current event calendar. Um, just making sure that the events that we're currently doing, they are continuing to be successful, they continue to grow. We want to be able to create new events that are going to drive participation into the district as well. Um, and then we want to continue to make sure that we assist other merchants and stakeholders as needed to when they are hosting events, they're getting recognized and they're, you know, succeeding the most. Um, as you see, this is a, this is a potential calendar of events. Uh, we have some proposed, these are all proposed, these are not necessarily going to be done, but they are, um, they are event-esque, um, of things that we want to do. But as you see down here with this one, I mean, the majority of respondents wanted just more live music concerts and food and beverage events. Um, so we've developed some concepts based off of that. Those are subject to change based on, um, feedback when we are looking to add those events. And then of course, marketing, as we discussed, we want to be able to continue to increase our printed, our printed marketing, uh, materials and be able to get them in the hands of more people. We want to continue to grow our digital marketing presence and explore the data marketing, uh, explore, explore new digital marketing opportunities, whether that's through different platforms or just using new things. Uh, we want to be able to research and do that as necessary and then be able to continue to promote the merchants through all of those marketing avenues, whatever we decide. Um, but as you see over here, um, you know, 67% of people are aware of the Downtown Greenville Partnership and our marketing efforts. Um, but the big number is right now, you know, the majority of people say our effectiveness is a three. We want to see as we continue to grow that that number continues to increase as well. Um, but also here, you know, the majority of the people, either they get their news about Downtown Greenville either through social media or through word of mouth. Um, so being able to use those as well. Um, but again, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you guys all again for being able to continue to believe in us and allowing us to do the work that we, you know, we, that we believe is going to continue to make downtown thrive. Um, you know, as we're talking about, as downtown, as Greenville, as Pitt County, as Eastern North Carolina grows, it's all going to start here in the heart of the east of downtown Greenville. Before I turn it over to questions or anything like that, I'd have Jim Blunt, who's our board chair. Um, he wanted to just say a few words on the current state of the board.
I promise not to keep you guys, I know this is gone too long, but, um, first of all, thank you, thank you, thank you for your commitment downtown. I really appreciate it. It's been a very difficult time after COVID coming off and trying to figure out how we could move forward as this organization. But what, what I've learned, I've worked with three city managers in the last 10 years and each brings a unique perspective. But I could tell you that that young man right there is special and he has really done a heck of a job. And I know you all know that, but, and I'd probably embarrass him, but he is fully invested and, and he, you know, rolls the sleeves up and we've had some really good progress. Uh, I was vice chair two years and Thursday's my last meeting, I'm done. So that'll be it for me as board chair for, for the last two years. But also Margot, Margot, where is Margot? Is she in here? Oh, Margot's wonderful and your staff is just great. Uh, what, uh, what I've learned in the last couple of years is Greenville's growing. Uh, we're not a small town anymore, we're a city. Uh, I felt like if I could achieve a couple of things as board chair, that we would be much better off when I stepped off and, and a couple of things are this. Janice Gallagher's awesome. She's coming on the board next year. Well, Kelly Andrews is. And then, um, the NC Alliance. So we got David Warner coming on the board next year. If you don't have the city, the county, the alliance working together, you're really not going to make much headway. And, and anyway, that's a great thing. The other thing is, is Phil Rogers. Uh, I'm going to meet with him, uh, tomorrow, Thursday, Wednesday. Um, and he wants to meet and know about downtown and he's hands-on and I'm going to tell, I'm going to tell him that your staff has really done a great job and they have, they have done a great job. So I just wanted to stand up here and say that, you know, the money that you guys invested in us is great. What he, one thing he didn't say is we put a little less than 400 in last year in this downtown, 400,000 out of our account. That's a lot of money to be rolled into marketing, branding, events and beautification. And that was, that was to show our good faith and we appreciate everything you guys have done back for us though. That's it. I don't have.
I'd like to say, yeah, I think you for calling me out, but Margot, I'm telling you has, Margot has just been a, a godsend for the, the events down here. So a lot of credit goes to her.
I have a question. Uh, thank you, Mr. Blunt, for being here. My question is, can you give some examples of your efforts to recruit diverse members to your board, more, uh, to have more diversity within your board?
We, I was on the board 10, 12 years ago. We had a lot more, we had 35 members and we were down to 14 now. And that was strategically done to get it down to a manageable number. Um, we have been talking about bringing more, we have, the most females we've got on the board, but we do not, as far as people of color, we do, we have lost two members in the last four years, um, that have just, you know, just rolled off every two years. And we have got to get, um, a list of the individuals who own and operate a business downtown, black, um, owners. And we are getting, um, a list from Kyle. The issue there is they need to be recommended by a board member and all you need to do is just tell Matt Scully. Matt Scully's our liaison, comes to all of our meetings. Um, if you have a recommendation, we have a lot of seats opening up next year. We only had a couple this year and, um, but next year we'll have a lot of seats opening. So just pass those recommendations. I know there's a couple that bought the courthouse cafes, is that where, you know, the restaurant up there? Yeah, that would be one and then a couple more. We are confined to a district downtown, so they do need to be in the downtown district to do that. But, you know, we would welcome that, you know, I, Mike and I talked about it at my year-end breakfast with him last week.
But to.
I asked them to get a very strong.
And that's to follow up. I know Tiana's not here tonight, but I've had multiple conversations with Tiana about working together to make sure that the downtown, the downtown demographics match the demographics of the city. That's a big thing that I want to make sure is we have a more representative community to this district. Um, that's something I'm going to work hard over to make sure that we can continue to bring new businesses down here, bring more diverse businesses and be able to then have that leadership in our organization as well.
I, diversity includes a whole gray of individuals. So I appreciate your comments, but yeah, awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, I hope that once downtown and next, after 18 months, it's going to be incredible. This place is going to look incredible.
Do members have to be involved with the downtown business?
Yes, so the, our bylaws when we kind of reorganized the, in order to be on the board, you have to be a stakeholder of the district, whether that be a property owner, a business owner in the downtown, the downtown district and that district has been defined, um, through our contract of services. But so with that, I know there's been conversations about adding, changing. Um, so as, you know, more opportunities become available or if development happens around the area, being able to include them as well is very important to us.
It's an overlay district, right? So now you're just operating some of these.
Yes. Yep.
So I would say your marketing here, I'm trying to say this in a, in a way that's understood, um, doesn't portray the diversity that we want to see in Greenville. Um, and we all know the history of downtown and it's important that everyone sees themselves when you make your presentations, which was excellent by the way. And just the ECU students of all cultures, backgrounds should see themselves in those, in your marketing.
And that's where, as we continue to work through those, it's going to be a top priority to make sure that things that we are covering, things that we are capturing are representative.
We need input. They need input, the staff does, because we're just trying to put a frame, a manageable framework with a vision and a plan and operational plan. So we definitely.
I mean, but the cultures and the activities that we've had in downtown Greenville has been a part of, is not shown in those pictures. Secondly, do you know when the update in the signs will be completed?
The, like the placemaking, the wayfinding signs.
From uptown to downtown.
Yes, we have actually, we had just gotten in contact with the design firm that created them. Um, we have a beautification committee meeting tomorrow morning. We're going to break down, there is a lot of signs, not just in the district, but the city itself that have that. Um, but we have a full breakdown. We've just been, it has been trying to find out who housed it, who had it. Um, but we finally just got connected with them. So tomorrow we're going to be talking about how many are there, what was it going to take, options that we can. So hopefully within the next four to six months, we will see some significant changes to getting those updated.
I have a great, you got a question. Are you finished?
I, I just have one more question. For the businesses that have the uptown, like I saw the glasses. Do we have anything to support them and?
So we, one, we, when we were going through this and having those, those are organizations that we went and talked to, ones that have uptown in their name. Um, you know, in the conversations that we had with them, a lot of them were like, hey, it's our identity, just because y'all are changing doesn't necessarily mean we have to. Uh, but those were conversations to where if you guys are interested, if you guys are feeling excluded by being uptown as opposed to downtown, um, we, you know, we said we can talk about it, we can, you know, work on it. But the conversations that we have had, like I'll say with, you know, the two right now that come off the top ahead, uh, Uptown Brewing, they're like, yeah, we've been Uptown Brewing for 10 plus years, like it doesn't necessarily, and then Uptown Nutrition, she said, as I say, she's like, do I have to change my name? And I said, no. And she said, okay, great. Um, so that's, um, but yeah, if, you know, if they ever consider it or, you know, we'll be willing to have conversations and see if there are things that we can do to help with those.
Thank you. And you're done with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have a, um, some sort of quick questions. We don't have to go into a lot of detail on there, just kind of nuts and bolts information. But I wanted to kind of piggyback my first question with Councilman, uh, Mayor Tim Daniels asking about signs. At one point we talked about doing some, uh, we call it placemaking signs, some welcoming signs. Hey, you are here, you are in downtown Greenville. Is that going to be part of what you're doing?
Yes, so that's going to be part of the conversation tomorrow. Um, and then once we get a, once we have a, hey, this is how many, we get the options and we limit, we find how, you know, what cost is a, like go to that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
I think, uh, I think signs was a much more conversation. I mean, we're talking several hundred thousand dollars of what it's going to take in order to be able to transition the signs. So that's something I think that, you know, downtown plays a part in it, but that's more of a conversation that's going to have to be had between the city manager's office and the engineering department and how it partnerships with the projects that we have going on.
Okay, good, yeah, yeah.
I don't want to kind of step out there. I don't want to kind of step out there and promise something that they're not going to be able to do, because we're talking several hundred thousand.
I asked how many, Aaron turned, how many, how many signs do we have in the city? She goes, we're up to a thousand now.
Yeah, that's great. So just continue along those lines. Glad to hear the signs are going to be a, a project. This, don't, don't need a lot of detail here, just kind of asking, is there a, do you have an arm that deals with real estate? I know some uptown, downtown agencies do. Do we have that yet and is it something?
We don't, we're working the partnerships between those who handle that. We are working, building, we are working on connecting and building those and not necessarily since, I mean, with us only having a staff of full, two, two full-time people, if we can work and partner with groups who do that, that's what we will be, we'll be focusing on. But we are having conversations with Overtons, with TAFs, a lot, and we're doing a lot of dealings in those downtown businesses. We're working with them a lot to just have an idea of what's out there and what's available.
And then not having a spokesperson that's part of it.
Yes, yeah.
We refer everything out, because my call, we say call Michael Irvin or the other two group.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, my wearing glasses. My next question is, you mentioned Pirate Fest, still glad it's growing. Did you say you raised your vendor fees?
Yeah.
And that's to help, I, I'm concerned about excluding vendors. I know some of the folks that we love to visit, they, they do, you know, they do coffee cups. Is this, are we making sure that there's a lot of activity?
Yes, so we stayed, um, we stayed pretty much on foot, like on the same page as a lot of the other local festivals of the Pirate Fest size. Um, but with that, you know, all are considered. I mean, we saw, you know, we had an increase of applications this year, even with the increase in vendor fees.
If there's someone who has a smaller scale business, I know you're not a nonprofit, well, you are nonprofit, but I know sliding scales and all that, I don't, I don't mean to imply that you need a sliding scale. I just want, do you have steps in place to make sure that everyone feels they have a chance, a shot to take part in this?
If there are conversations, like if there is a business person or if there's a whoever who wants to be a part of it and they have questions, we can have conversations and then we can make changes as necessary. But that's where right now, like I said, our, our current plan with what we have with our vendor fees stays with a lot of what you're seeing festival-wise around there. Um, but like that's what we talk about, um, you know, just kind of off the top, like our downtown merchants, if they want to be a part of it, we offer a reduced rate because they are a downtown business. Uh, so being able to offer things like that.
Good, it sounds like you're very sensitive to that and I appreciate your answer. Um, let's see, alcohol at Sunday in the park, I didn't, has it expanded to Sunday in the park?
Yes, we started so last week, well, last night was our second time doing it, but that was this year's that we'd done it, we'd had it last week, we had it this week.
Because I had, again, I, I don't drink, I don't, I don't care about people who do drink. I just had always understood that Sunday the park would be, would not ever have alcohol. It didn't sound pretty? Oh, okay, sorry. I don't know how to say it any other way. I just always understood that Sunday the park wouldn't have alcohol.
It was, it was partnership, the Recreation and Parks presented to us.
All right, good, all right. As long as it was a considered decision though, because it's, I was surprised to hear that.
Yeah, that's where we, I, I just, I don't want to make it sound like we did not say, hey, let's do this. Recreation and Parks approached us and said, this is something we're interested in trying. Um, so that's where, you know, we will have conversations post series and see how it went. And if we decide, hey, it's, they want to continue to do it, great. If not, it, it's not, it's all right.
Well, and I, I didn't even notice it, I was there last night. Well, and I didn't even notice it, I was there last night, and again, if it's something that the public wants, I do not at all want to imply that it's, that it's not, I had, I know that in the past, there had been strong feelings about Sunday in the Park, and I know these are new times and new city, and that may be something that the public wants. I love the mural that you've got, is there any way we could do something like that in our downtown area?
So we have another one, we had a, it was, they printed one, it ended up being too big for the space, so we currently have another one that is looking for a home, so that's where we're kind of discussing potential opportunities for that. But yes, one of the options is talking about, can we find a space somewhere in the district to put it? At that point, it's just identifying and wants, you know, if that's a place that we decide would be a good fit for it, we'll go down through those proper channels to make sure we can put it up there.
Love that, love that. My last question is, the Hodges Alley looks great. I have heard some concerns about the Merchants Alley and how, and the changes that could take place there, specifically about that crape myrtle tree.
I'll take, I'll take that one. We are.
We are evaluating all options to do everything we can to minimize the impact on the tree. Now, the footer, to be able to place the archways, to a certain degree, will have to interfere with that little garden area, but the tree, I think, was the make, was one of the primary concerns, and we're going to, we're going to do everything we can to make sure.
As long as that concern was heard.
We had a meeting with him Friday.
Okay, good, 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 as long as that concern is being heard.
Everybody's sitting on it right now.
I've got, I've got Kevin, Kevin Mould and all of them.
Okay, good, good, good.
I'm glad to hear you going down to Evans Street, that is one thing a lot of merchants have talked about.
Yep.
So I'm really glad to hear that.
Is Picasso still involved with, like, tonight for garden?
Yes, we are, we're 50-50 partners in that, so any proceeds that we make from the event, we do split with Picasso.
I think just insisting from your marketing team of the company, we're paying to do that for us, just to give them that direction, that we want to see diversity, inclusion included in those pictures especially, in marketing materials, I think that'd be an easy thing to do, because the diversity, inclusion already exists in a lot of ways, can always improve, but there's plenty there to photograph and celebrate, so just giving them those directions in a specific way, I think would help a lot.
Conversations that we're having directly, especially rolling forward into this new fiscal year, I mean, I mean, the conversations will be had right away and make sure that we, we're doing the best we can.
Kyle, it looks like you grew the Pirate Fest by vendors, like almost 70%, is my math pretty close?
About there, yes.
Congratulations, thank you for that, that's an amazing improvement.
Thank you, but it was a hand-to-hand partnership with us and Mark, I mean, it's, you know.
With Mark and Grace and their team, thank you.
Your vendors, by seven, almost 70% in one year is amazing. Good work to both you and Margot and everybody else, it helps y'all get that accomplished.
Thank you, thank you.
I want to thank the other members of council for elevating the need for diversity, and want to be real detailed in stating that diversity is age, cultural, and race. And so we want to make sure that everyone is represented in downtown. In order to do that, I think we need to be intentional about those efforts in setting metrics that we want to achieve, and goals that we want to accomplish in making that happen. Also wanted to say I appreciate the rebranding from uptown to downtown, most definitely. So definitely appreciate that. And then the last thing I'd like to elevate is what I see as the consistency in our community communicating what they want. Through your survey, I think it was 73.8% that said that they wanted more green space or to maintain green space, which is consistent with the Horizons Plan, and just want to continue to elevate the consistency in what they're communicating to us as we roll into U D O also.
And that's where, you know, and that's. We lean into it. However, we can be a tool to y'all to make sure we get the word out, we get feedback, that's what we're here to do as well. So however, we can continue to partner, however, we can continue, you know, whatever we can do, we're here to make sure we can make it happen.
Good. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, motion may have a council member, Blackwood, second by council member Robinson. Call those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We got our adjourned?